I'd like to welcome everybody to our October school board meeting. Call the roll, Mr. Bassard.
Mr. Jewell?
Here.
Mrs. Lainhart?
Here.
Mr. Campbell?
Here.
Mr. Duncan?
Here.
And Mr. Moore?
Here.
I'd like to ask everyone to stand and listen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Hook for student recognition.
Thank you, Mr. Jewell. This is the board. We've got several here. I'm gonna pull an impromptu here. I asked our band director. We're out practicing in this lovely weather, but we've got some pretty good news to share. So I thought it'd be great to have John come in and share the news with everybody.
Yeah, guys, for the first time in 14 years, we have qualified for state competition here at our marching band. Our band's got a long history of competing at the state level. Kind of died down for a few years. We are happy that we are finally back, really competitive in our state circuit. We perform next Friday at Brunswick High School, which is a pretty good haul for us, at 7:30 PM. So we're really excited to go up there and really show off our kids. The amount of growth we've experienced here in the last two years has been incredible. When I got hired, obviously, we were not very good. We were small, but we've just been working away the last two years and really made a huge improvement in our program. The kids behave better, they rehearse better, they carry themselves better. Just all around, better program. And it's awesome to see our results finally starting to pay off. Our hard work's finally paying off. Just wanted to come by and let you guys know what's going on. We've been to five contests this year. We've placed top three at every single contest, winning a bunch of awards. So I think the Carlisle Band is finally back to where it needs to be. We'll still work hard, we'll still get better, but we finally feel good about where we're at as a program. I said a lot of hard work, it's finally paying off. So if you want to take a big road trip with us next Thursday, 7:30, our first state finals appearance since 2003, my sophomore year of high school. So we'll keep working, we'll keep representing Carlisle at the highest level. Thank you guys for your support of our program, it means a lot. It's been an incredible year, so I'll shut up.
Is this the OMAA?
Yeah, we're at OMAA on Friday night. We compete at Midstates Championships next Saturday. We get a 10:45 showtime at Miami's Burke High School. So our way close contest, so 10:45 next Saturday is our Midstates Championship, which is a tri-state circuit of Ohio, Kentucky, and Indiana bands.
That is AM, right?
That is AM, yes. And we will once again wrap up the year in Indianapolis in a couple weeks for national championships. So real busy, but the kids are pretty pumped, working hard, they're in there right now, working their butts off. So I'm really excited about where we're going and what we're doing, so appreciate it.
It's really exciting. Thank you very much for the update. We'll get the band to get in here once we get out of the competition season.
Yeah, for sure.
We'll bring them in here.
Awesome, yep. We'll do the next one.
Next up, I want to have Jayde Step from Grigsby. Welcome. We've got a special student we want to recognize.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Hook and the board for having me this evening. Usually when I come up to recognize Grigsby, I recognize our students' achievements in academics, fine arts, athletics, but very rarely do I get a chance to recognize a student that is inspiring or should be inspiring to all of us. Behind me sits Matthew Harrison. And Matthew Harrison has leukemia. He is currently in remission. He's sitting between his mom and dad, Betsy and Shane Harrison, and he's got several other family members here with him as well, supporting him. As I've struggled with a few health problems recently, and I'll get home from a long day of work, you know, I told my wife, "This hurts, that hurts," and then I remember what Matthew's going through. Mr. Duncan and I were sitting at the River Days booth, and I believe it was somewhere about 185 degrees that day. And, you know, I'm complaining to him, he's talking to me about how hot it is. Matthew come and stood between us with a mask on and sat and talked with me for an hour, did not one time complain, and actually, I don't think he one time closed his mouth either. He is an incredible kid, he should be an inspiration to us all. So at this time, if you would join me in recognizing mighty Matthew Harrison for his determination to fight leukemia and inspiring all of us that are fortunate enough to know him. Matthew, please come forward.
Thank you, Mr. East Step. Matthew, thank you for blessing us with your appearance here. We appreciate it, okay? You make us all proud. Make us all proud, son. You betcha.
Thank you. Thanks for the announcement.
As they're making their way out, I'm going to introduce our last guest up here, Susan Klein, our Director of Special Education. Give us a brief update as to where we're at, what mighty things we're doing in special ed. (laughter) Turn us the paper, bud.
If I can get us to use the screen next time, I won't print anyhow. Well, I appreciate the opportunity always to come talk to you about what's going on in our world with students who have special learning needs. The first thing I wanted to point out to you is we do have some new special ed staff members. We have two new ones at Alden Brown, a preschool teacher and an intervention specialist. We have a new aide at Grigsby. At Chamberlain, we have two new folks and two folks that moved from the high school back to the middle school. And we have two new aides at the high school. So we really welcome them to our team, and they are really complimenting what everybody is doing, and kids really like them, and I'm grateful that we have them. Wanted to let you know that again this year, our special ed department met all indicators in our performance profile, so we keep striving to do that, they keep raising the bar, and we keep trying to meet it. So, so far, so good with that. Another big thing in our world is that our preschool is up to be considered for a five-star rating through Step Up to Quality, which is kind of that next level. It's above licensure. It just says that our program is doing an excellent job in meeting the needs of kids. And as you know, we have a preschool that serves both typically developing students and students with disabilities, and it's a great model, and so fingers crossed, we have a couple steps to go. We've submitted our application, we will have an onsite review sometime this year, so I'll keep you posted on that. The next good news is that our Warren County Board of Developmental Disabilities had a mini-grant opportunity, and we were lucky enough to receive $16,400. That money is intended to enhance our program for students who meet the developmental disability. So what we did with that, our grant said that we would purchase additional iPads. Our students really find that an engaging way to practice skills, and our intervention specialists appreciate it as a tool to help them collect data on how kids are doing. We also created a sensory motor lab. This is currently located at Alden Brown, but we look forward to the new building and having it accessible to students of all ages. This whole kind of sensory system that develops in kids can be supported by movement activities, and those activities make their brains more able to learn, more agile in learning, and helps them kind of regulate their emotions and their attention levels. So we feel lucky to have gotten that. The last things that we were able to do is create some vocational opportunities for our junior high and high school kids. And they are both in the classroom, kind of teaching vocational skills, and then adding a job coach that is going out into our community with kids to do internships. We have partnered with Simply Brown and Ally Strong and are placing junior and seniors from our resource room, pardon me, and they'll be doing all kinds of cool work, from organizing things to customer service to any number of different skills that they'll learn. Finally, the opportunities that our kids have through the ESC. We have two interns this year placed at Project Search in Lebanon, and it's just a delight to see them interacting with the residents there, learning skills. You can see that Courtney Gibson and Haley Harden were highlighted as interns of the month in September. And we have one student placed in Quaker Heights in the Transition Living Program. And that's a cool opportunity because it's both vocational and daily living skills in an apartment. So that's another cool thing. As I was working on our Step Up to Quality application, I had an opportunity to start looking at all the ways that our community is supporting our students, and I listed just a few here for you. Everything from the library coming to read to preschoolers, to the fire department teaching fire safety, to the Lions Club and Lioness Club supporting our programs. So it was really neat to see all the things that they do for us. So in short, I would say that we're very lucky here in Carlisle Schools. Blessings really do abound, both in the quality of our staff that are really inspiring kids to stay motivated, even when things are really hard for them. And our students, I mean, you know, when I see the way they include even our kids with the most intense needs, it's heartwarming and it makes a difference. And then finally, our administration and our board supporting our programs, it really is a blessing to be a student here and to be an employee here. So that's kind of my quick, down-and-dirty information about the good stuff happening in special ed.
I have a question about the compliance indicators. The IDEA audit findings is listed as none, is that just not happened yet this year?
That's because we had no findings. So those findings would be if we had not done something that we should have done.
Okay.
And then we would have had to come up with a corrective action plan.
Gotcha.
So, yep.
Sometimes none is a good thing.
Sometimes none is a good thing. In this case, that's what we wanted, 100% everywhere else, but we take none there.
None in that one, definitely. Thank you.
Your questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes our student program recognition for our band.
Now's our time for our visitor comments, if we have any visitor that wants to make a comment at this time. Now I'll turn it over to our treasurer for our treasurer report. Mr. Bassard?
Thank you, Mr. Jewell. Just a couple non-action items before we move on here. The first is, I give the information to you for the Capitol Conference, which is coming up in a few weeks, so try to remember where you place those between now and a few weeks, and bring those with you when we attend the conference. I think it's November 13th and 14th. So just wanted to make sure you had those in advance before we meet at the conference. Second thing, and just to go along with, sometimes none is a good thing, just to give a quick update on our audit at this point. Auditors come in and do the cash basis of our accounting system first, spend about three weeks here through the auditing process, and then they leave and they'll be back in December. So fortunately, I've made the point right now where they've left, made it through the first three weeks, and to my knowledge, after speaking with them, we don't have any findings to be concerned about at this point. So that's also happened the last couple years, and then they have found something to discuss later on after that. So not getting too excited about it, but certainly happy that at this point, everything is good. Been through what seems like crawling everywhere through everything that we do, and so far, so good. So just kind of give you an update on where we stand with that. Any questions about auditor conference or anything? All right, we'll move on to our action items. First off, will be the minutes from the last regularly scheduled board meeting, which was September 25th.
I have a motion?
Someone.
Second.
First, by Mrs. Lainhart. I need a second.
Second.
By Mr. Moore. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Lainhart?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Jewell?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
And Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Next is the financial reports, which is part of your packet. Again, we're still catching up from the busy, busy start that happens at the beginning of school here, so what you see is September 30, financial records, which, everything seems to be in place. No surprises, all good, and because we have a five-year forecast next, I'll wait and talk a little bit more about the rest of finances at that point. So I need approval for our financial report.
First, by Mr. Duncan. Second, by Mr. Moore. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Lainhart?
Yes.
And Mr. Jewell?
Yes.
Next is our semi-annual approval of a five-year forecast for the district, always in October and May. I bring a five-year forecast to you for approval that needs to be filed with the Ohio Department of Education by the end of October and the end of May. So looking at the forecast that I presented to you, I just have a few areas that I want to talk about. Again, passing a levy, which would be four years ago now, we're still staying on the front end of that levy and projecting bringing in more revenue than what we're expecting to spend at this point, which is a good thing. When we get to the point where we're spending more than what we're bringing in, you know, your only two options at that point are to either reduce expenses or increase revenue. So very important that we continue to plan and continue to stay on the other side of that bar where we are continuing to at least break even, if not bring in more than what we're spending, in order to use our taxpayer dollars as fiscally responsible as we can. In our forecast, through this year, through next year, and then into the third year would be what we're forecasting, where we would be right about where our expenditures will meet what our forecasted revenues are bringing in. The good news on that is, as you know, your treasurer, I like to be conservative. That doesn't mean we're heading necessarily directly on that number, but conservative figures, that's what we need to be planning for, is three years out. That matches up with something very important for us, is we're going to be transitioning from one building, or four buildings, into one building. So the plan would be making sure that we're as fiscally sound as we can be moving from one facility to the next. Never know what type of expenses may come up. Might we see some reduction? Yes. Might we see some increases? Yes. We don't know. We just need to be in the best possible position we can be in as we're moving into the building.
Have we heard anything about the DPNL appeal yet?
We do not have anything at all on the DPNL deal at this point, so that is still out there. DPNL had another appeal with another entity, and that has been resolved, but ours has not, so...
How did that?
How did that one get resolved? That one was resolved in favor of...
In favor of them, or?
It was about halfway in between. So the appeal that they had asked for, they did not get the entire appeal, they got about 50% of the appeal. So any of the taxes that were due over that period of time, they had to pay back 50% of those taxes to that and all the other entities that they needed. Might that happen for us? Yes, that could potentially happen for us, but we certainly don't want to count on that as we're planning our dollars for the future. One thing I do want to add with this forecast, well, a couple things. One, it's great seeing black numbers all the way through the forecast. So big picture, on a five-year forecast, we should have money at the end of five years. That's a good thing. Myself and Mr. Hook, you know, when we did the emergency levy five years ago, we're going to make this last for five years and hopefully be able to continue to do that. It appears we'll be able, with the renewal, to be able to make it last another five years and then see where we are at that point. Speaking of the renewal, in the forecast here, I have, and I want to make sure you understand this, I have assumed that it has passed, or it's going to pass. In the May five-year forecast, because I don't want to convolute things and make it confusing by any means, the May five-year forecast, I'll show what it looks like if it doesn't pass, so that you have the difference between the two. But very simply, our emergency levy brings in $993,222. That's what it was passed for. So you can look at this, if this doesn't renew after '18, beginning in year 2019, strike off a million dollars each year. And we won't make it very far by doing that. So it's very important that we get the renewal passed in May as we move forward, especially into the new buildings. So with that, does anybody have any specific questions about the forecast?
Under line 3.03, Purchase Services, says that we had the largest reduction in open enrollment out. Is there any correlation to enrollment, you know, like are enrollment numbers going up or anything along those lines, or did those people just move out of the area, or do we have any kind of data on that?
It's not a move. Open enrollment out would be citizens, students that live within our district attending other schools.
Other schools.
Yes.
Private school.
Right, but I'm saying, it says we had the largest reduction in that. So they came back to our schools?
No, the largest reduction means the largest amount of money being reduced from our budget adding to another district.
Gotcha.
So we've had the highest amount of students leave the district than we've had here. That also correlates with when we went through the process of building our new facility here, that our enrollment numbers are trending downward.
Downward, yeah.
But we made a conscious decision to plan for those kids to come back once we pass this.
Gotcha.
So that's why our LFI's include additional classroom space above and beyond what the state said they were going to provide for us as part of the project. For this year, those open enrollment numbers leaving are down. We've retained a few more of our students this year than we have in the years past. Is that going to continue to trend that way? I would like to think so, especially with newer facilities coming and the great things are going to happen here, but there's certainly no way to tell exactly where that's going to be.
Does that have any correlation to our open enrollment numbers in, like students coming?
Our open enrollment numbers in are as high as they've ever been, so that's a good thing. You know, a couple of the districts around us also have old facilities. We get a lot of students from Franklin, we get students from Valley View. So those students come here for a multitude of reasons. And also, you know, one of the reasons why we lose a significant amount of money is there are just so many options for students to do nowadays. You have the online schools with E-CO, we have the GOVs, we have community schools that are in our district. There's just, from when we went to school, you went to the public school, or you went to the private school that may be a part of your district, now there's just so many other options that parents take advantage of, trying to do the best that they think to educate their son or daughter.
Excellent, thank you.
Anything else? If not, I'll need an approval for the five-year forecast.
Someone.
First, motion by Mrs. Lainhart. I need a second.
Second.
By Mr. Moore. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Lainhart?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Jewell?
Yes.
And then lastly, we need to approve a donation by the Carlisle Lionnesses Club to the, she left, Special Education Department at Alden Brown to help offset snacks for one of the classrooms there in Alden Brown.
I need a motion. First, by Mr. Duncan.
Second.
Second, by Mrs. Lainhart. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Mrs. Lainhart?
Yes.
Mr. Jewell?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
And Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Jewell. That's my report for the board.
Thank you. Now we'll turn it over to our superintendent, Mr. Hook.
Thank you, Mr. Jewell. Remember, my non-action item is just kind of the ongoing update, where we are in the process of our buildings. There's probably not a day that doesn't go by where I'm not talking about it with somebody. This is, even though you don't see ground moving, this is probably the most critical time in the preparations. Once we get to groundbreaking, you know, now you've got the plans, everything's there. So one of the things that we can always direct people to is the district website. I'm going to keep a running update with the project as different pieces come online, any community meetings, anything like that, it'll be right in there. Actually, when we break ground, then we'll start actually having pictures. There's not really much bad pictures over yet, so... But with that said, if you do access the website, right now, as I had mentioned before, our September 18th, the architects were selected, have met with them, so since that point in time, moving forward into October, right now, the construction manager portion, that's posted on the OFCC website, that closes Thursday. And so then we'll begin the process of selection, like we did with the architects, only it's a little bit different, there's more to it, you know, because they're actually working on pricing of the whole project and getting things to where it's under budget and on time. So that's an important piece to this. But that's a little bit longer process, okay? That doesn't slow our architects down right now. So, but that'll close on the 26th, and there are the process of scoring and rating who's interested in the work, and we'll probably be able to announce that at another date coming up here shortly. In the meantime, I've had a couple of conversations with Nathan Jones, who is the state project manager assigned to us. Been moving forward on the educational visioning portion of the project, which is strongly advised by the state that we engage in that. This past week and a half, I've been looking at the resumes of the, I believe there's four state-approved educational visioning groups. Talked to Nathan today, we have selected Jeff Parker, who is associated with SHP as well, and he, we will be meeting shortly. My hope is still yet this week to start setting up that process and what's involved there is gathering and going, leading... there as gathering and going, leading probably a group of 25 people, which is a lot with educators, different variety of educators. There'll be some board representations, community representation. And really, the visioning piece is, what do you see education like in five years, 10 years, and beyond? Because this will impact education for the next 50 to 60 years in Carlisle. So it's important we do this right. What that, you know, that's what he does, that's all he does, this person. Very excited about it. Some of you may remember, he came to one of our meetings that we had in the Chamberlain Gymnasium when we were first dealing with the bond issue and stuff. So very excited about that. So that'll be kicking off, and if you look at our timeline, it's one of the things that we said that we would be doing in the fall. Whole lot more input, because then we'll have some design teams, and then we'll actually be talking about, with science teachers, about what science rooms should look like, and music teachers, about what those spaces need to look like. All of that information, history, how do we put history into these buildings and capture who we are as a community? All of those pieces will be going, moving forward with the architects now through most of the winter. And all that information constantly evolves how the building actually will look. Remember, it's not like going over in a subdivision and picking one of five house models that are already pre-made, you know, and you can change the front look, you know? It's not like that. Or you can change the brick color, salad. Every school building that's built is from scratch. So it comes with a lot of input, okay? So there'll be people, I'm sure they'll be calling a variety of people. I'll be touching bases with that if anybody is real interested in being involved. There is a commitment of time. The educational visioning process is probably four different evenings, a couple hours apiece. But like I said, it's a small, small price to pay for the next 50 to 60 years of educational change within our district. So that's what's starting to roll now, which again is critical for our architects. Other than that, we are right on target with where we're at. So we'll just keep it posted, and as those meetings come up and we're looking for people, we'll push out information and contact us, let us know if you're interested in being involved, okay? So that's kind of the quick update of where we're at. With that, we will move into just a small number of action items. Under item B1, under General Business, I just need a review. This is our, of a policy. We're not changing anything, but because of where we are legally with updating the wellness committees, we have to show on the policy that we've reviewed it and so that it's up to date. We have to do that every two or three years, so.
I need a motion.
So moved.
First by Mr. Moore.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Lainhart. Call a roll, please.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Lainhart?
Yes.
Mr. Jewell?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
And item two, under Certified Retirements, this McAllister is finishing up her retire, rehire year, and so she will not be back. And the reason it's on now is by doing so, then she doesn't have to go through the Ohio Teachers Evaluation System. You have to have that retirement letter in prior to December 1st. So with that, I need approval for, to accept that retirement.
Need a motion.
So moved.
First by Mr. Duncan.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Lainhart. Call a roll, please.
And just to be clear, it's not a retire, rehire year.
Correct. She's already done that.
She's already done that. This is her...
This is... Yeah. This is her first time retiring.
Oh, okay.
So she's just retiring at the end of the year.
Okay.
It's Mrs. Centers that's doing her retire, rehire.
That's right.
So just want to make sure that everybody's clear on that before we vote.
And that was a first by...
Me.
Mr. Duncan?
Mr. Duncan. Second by Mrs. Lainhart.
Okay, sorry.
Okay.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Mrs. Lainhart?
Yes.
Mr. Jewell?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Item three, Classified Employment, for the classified substitute, we had to bring in retroactive to September 26th.
I need a motion.
So moved.
First by Mr. Moore.
I'll make the second.
Second by Mrs. Lainhart. Call a roll, please.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Lainhart?
Yes.
Mr. Jewell?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
And finally, supplemental employment, part of the LPDC process is, I want to say
every other year, they nominate a new CTA member to head that. So I need approval for Misty.
I need a motion. First by Mr. Duncan.
He jumped right into that.
I'll make the second.
Second by Mrs. Lainhart. Call a roll, please.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Mrs. Lainhart?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Jewell?
Yes.
And Mr. Moore?
Yes.
I'm assuming that resounding yes is because now your wife is not in that position.
It's the first time he's been in.
So that concludes my action.
Okay. Do we have anything from the legislative report, Mr. Moore?
The number one thing that's going on right now is House Bill 49, which is the biennial, or biannual budget, or biennial budget up there that they're voting on, talking about. Looks like it could have, anytime they talk about money and the state is involved, you know, could have a drastic impact on education. So going to be reading up more on that and focusing on the testimony. Hopefully, they should have a vote finalized on that in the next month or so.
Have they changed anything on graduation yet?
Depends which month you ask.
Exactly.
Yeah.
They, they do have a, part of that was in the new bill, in House Bill 49, so...
That's what I thought.
They have redefined the points that it takes off of the end-of-course exams, so you have that. But in addition to that, they've added a couple other alternative pathways to graduation, which includes, I want to say, one of it is community service, there's one arena. So they've tried to put it in a position, put themselves in a position that they did dramatically, all of a sudden have, some whole thousands of kids that are not eligible to graduate. So it's, it's, again, it's one of those things.
Could change. Subjects change.
It's a good change for now, but will it change again?
Probably.
Well, if it passes, anything indicating of the future, yeah, I'd say probably, yes.
Hasn't that already started, the community? Okay, that's what, okay.
Yes.
I think our juniors would be the first one.
Yeah, that's what I thought, too.
Past this summer, our current seniors are under this.
Under the seniors?
Oh, yeah. Because that's the first thing, one of the first things I did is sent a notice over to our council and said, who's in jeopardy? If you're even on the list, let's make sure that we have an idea of what those, what we're looking at in terms of how many points have they accumulated? You get points from, can you get a zero? Zero to five, I think it's one to five is basically it. For the end-of-course exams, which include English, ninth grade English, 10th grade English, biology, Algebra I, geometry, American history, okay? You get to a certain point, government.
Government, yep.
So we should have a pretty good idea where kids are by now, at least, you know, unless they're in government. If they're within three points or so, then we got to be aware of that. We got to know. Monitor those kids and make sure that we have options if that doesn't happen, so.
Well, you know, my take on this legislature is that they say they're for us, but I dare to differ. I mean, there's a lot going on up there.
I'm trying to...
And you don't have to say anything, but there's a lot that goes on that's...
Well, what's, what's, what's got a lot of legs right now is a bill that's been introduced in the Senate, and it's called the Unfunded Mandate Bill. Some people call it the common sense.
Common sense bill.
Well, it was a conservative that was, that actually introduced it.
Conservative legislature.
And it's, and it's really about just more, a little bit more common sense to some of House Bill 49. One of the things that addressed, and House Bill 49 put into place was the new truancy laws, the tennis law. Hours instead of days, you know? Excused, unexcused, doesn't matter, you know? And all of a sudden, a kid that goes out on a, has a dentist appointment in the middle of the day, gets dinged, but we don't have any choice. We can't change it. So I'm hoping this helps, because this gives us the, you know, the local authorities, the local districts, the autonomy to say, it's an excused absence.
Well, didn't that also, didn't that also limit the, what had to be reported outside of, of the district itself to the truancy officers and things of that nature?
It's very specific.
Gave us more...
The House Bill 49 said with those letters, the new one gives us some flexibility.
Gives us some more, more...
It's a little more common sense.
Yeah, a little bit more autonomy to do things.
Look at it and say, okay, that doesn't make sense. You know, very quickly, you could be getting one of those letters, you know, that goes, hey? And so that's just one of a variety of...
Plethora of things.
You know, the substitute teacher bills and what the licensure looks like there, that they're trying to fix that a bit. There's really kind of a, been a teacher shortage. It's kind of starting to reverse from what it was like, you know, five, 10 years ago when there was a, just an overabundance of teachers. And teach, and kids getting out of college, not being able to find jobs in education, so it's, this'll help, you know, with the substitute piece. So anyway, more to come.
Okay. Anything going on at CTC?
CTC met on October 10, 2017, at 7:00 PM, and it was our regular session. And from what our legislative report, we got from there was not good, so that's what I'm going to say. It's just bad at the state level, so, but that's all I'm saying about it.
Now, are they on, on the bond issue?
Yeah, they are.
Yep.
Yeah, they've got a bond issue up, so...
Any old business? Any new business? And I need a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
First by Mr. Moore.
I'll make the second.
Second by Mrs. Lainhart. Call a roll, please.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Lainhart?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Jewell?
Yes.
Time is 6:43.
Thank you for all coming.
Thanks.